Things I'd like to add, I try and live my life by basically two principles that I learned a long time ago. One was from my pastor, and that is either you're part of the problem or part of the solution. And so I really want to give of myself my time, my effort, to really help out, roll up my sleeves and do what I can to help. Secondly, it comes from my grandfather, and this really has a lot to do with the Quality and Productivity Commission. My grandfather said, "Make what you want out of what you got." While grammatically, that's not the best thing to probably say, it makes a lot of sense. It makes sense because when you look at the plethora of city employees and agencies, and you get them all working together for positive things, to do a lot more with a lot less, it can really be a positive thing. So I want to be here to help with providing viable solution to complex problems.
Great. Well, thank you very much, and thank you for your willingness to serve the City of Los Angeles, especially at this time with the budget constraints that we're facing, the economy that we're facing. It's the right time for us to work with your commission to come up with some solutions for the city, to be more efficient, and find those areas where we could have more savings. Every year, the commission has an annual awards where they recognize a department or a department head that has created an innovative program that finds those efficiencies. And we look forward to trying to replicate some of those in some other areas of the city as well, and we look forward to working with you as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Asking about his experience working with other cities, District Eight Councilmember Bernard Parks offers Mr. Jones his thanks.
I'd just like to thank Michael for staying with us. When Michael was here last time, when this was continued, we had the earthquake, and he left the building quite rapidly, and upon reflection, decided to come back. But we wanted to thank him. Michael's done a great job in the Crenshaw Chamber, but also, I think, one of his legacies will always be the work he's done at the Crenshaw YMCA, where he served a number of years. And I think what's important for this commission is that he brings experience from three or four different cities. He's spent time in Oregon, Los Angeles, also believing Kansas, that he's developed an expertise in both for-profit and nonprofit, which would be very beneficial to this commission. And we're looking forward to a great deal of increased improvement, and particularly in this day and age with the economic situation. And so I just wanted to welcome him, thank him for putting himself forward, and look forward to working with him.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks, and that is the last speaker on our queue. Thank you again, Mr. Jones, for putting yourself forward, and Mr. Costa, for the pleasure of working with when you were with Senator Scott's office. We thank you as well. And with that, let's take a vote and make this official. So let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you both very much. Congratulations, a round of applause for our new commissioners.
Thank you.
Wednesday's Item Thirty-Seven found the council considering a planning and land use committee report that would make zoning changes in the northeast Los Angeles community plan.
This is a very, very important ordinance, but thank Councilmember Weisar. Together, we've been working on this for several years. This started quite some time ago, and it's been a subject of many, many meetings. So I wanted to ask the staff to first talk about the outreach, well, first talk about the objective of the ordinance, and then the outreach. And I'd like to ask Assistant Chief Frye, if you can start off with the public safety element of this, and your perspective, and perhaps share with my colleagues why this is so significant. If you have my time, please.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to come and talk about this, Councilman Reyes. Council members, my name is Assistant Chief Craig Frye, I'm the acting Fire Marshal for the City of Los Angeles. This is a project that we've been working with, with the Planning Department, Building and Safety, and as well as the council offices. This is a very important issue for me on two bases. One is a fire officer, one that has been involved with some recent incidents where we now have the ability to impact the community prior to a catastrophic emergency occurring, which we saw in the Silmar District the other day, Sepulveda Pass area. This is one where we can now address the needs for ingress and egress for our residents, one where we can address the water needs for the communities that we serve, and one that we can address the type of materials that we allow to go in there in building in regards to the fire resistiveness. And one of the most important things, what type of vegetation we allow to go in those areas. This is something we've worked very hard with. We're very thankful that we've had the opportunity, as a fire department, to come in early in this stage, so we can have an impact, a positive impact, to prevent a catastrophic incident. The second part is, I grew up in this area. I have family that lives in this area, and I see the importance of this for the area that I grew up in and that I lived in. So I appreciate it, and if there's any questions that I can bring in, and I'll let the Planning Department take it from there.
Yes, and thank you Assistant Chief, and colleagues. When I introduced this motion, it was back in 2004. At that time, we had focused on the District One areas, the hillside areas in northeast, Paradise Hill, parts of Montecito Heights, and from there, it expanded then. Councilmember Villarosa wanted to expand it to the other hills surrounding northeast. So we branched out into Alcerino and other parts of northeast. And with that, we've been meeting for the past four years with the community, and I'd like to ask the Planning Department, if they'd like to give us a summary of the nature of the work and the degree of outreach that occurred at this time.
Gabriela Juarez, Planning Department. Good morning, Council. In trying to move this project forward, we've done a number of outreach methods, including focus groups and small group meetings over the last two years, something over thirty-five of those in this particular area. In addition to that, we've done several workshops and information sessions. We've met with neighborhood councils throughout this area, as well as their subcommittees for land use. We've also extended our outreach to be translated into five different languages and available on our website, and we've also had translators available at all of our meetings. We've used different types of media in order to help portray the different issues and concerns that have been shared with us throughout this process, and we've made it an iterative process in that, at every stage of this process, we've taken input in order to continue to refine the regulations and make them exactly what the community would like to see.
This is a great thing for northeast Los Angeles, according to District Fourteen Councilmember Jose Weisar, who described some of the meetings that were held over the four-year period.
It's a long time coming, but I think it's a great day for northeast Los Angeles, for the hillsides of northeast Los Angeles. And I want to thank the Planning Department for all the work you've put into this, attending many meetings, a number of meetings I would hear of a meeting at least once every two weeks, and I'd say another one, but certainly, we did our outreach. Many of those meetings were contentious. Many of those meetings, people brought out misinformation that were scare tactics, that were hoping to scare people away from supporting a good policy. And once people understood what this was attempting to accomplish, many people actually did come on board. So thank you very much, and certainly, I thank you, Chief, for your support. And I know when we've talked about this, you mentioned your personal attachment to the area, and that certainly resonated with a lot of folks, knowing that a person of your stature understands the good in this policy. But this is a great thing. When I came on board three years ago, and the ICO had been proposed, and I heard about what it was going to accomplish, working with Ed Reyes and his staff and the Planning Department, we immediately wanted to make sure that we actually put the ICO into an ordinance. And what we have before us today will provide us with a way to ensure that we have additional safety. Many of these roads that lead up to the hillsides are small roads, and sometimes, our emergency vehicles cannot access those areas, so it will control density. It will also provide for some aesthetics, improvements in aesthetics, as we look out to these hillsides today. Without these measures, you have different types of buildings, of different construction, of different sizes, that does not make for the pleasant hillsides that you see from many of these areas. It will also provide for a way for our hillsides to be safer, so that we don't have mudslides and other events, natural events, that have caused injury and possibly death to many of our residents. So this is a great ordinance, a long time coming. I want to thank you all for the work you've done. I want to thank my staff, who work hard on this, who put up with repelling a lot of the misinformation that was put out there. I actually got called once and was asked by a Spanish-language television that, "What are we doing, taking away old women's property?" But that's the type of misinformation that was put out there. But at the end of the day, it's good for northeast Los Angeles, and this is a long time coming. And finally, I want to add that I introduce an amending ordinance that will address some litigation that is happening at Elephant Hill, an area that, if, in fact, the outcome of that case goes one way or another, these rules will apply to that area to ensure that those areas stay consistent with the development of the rest of northeast Los Angeles. And when many of the high school students who came to Plum, many of them were asking, "Why is it that in our area, we don't have the same types of beautiful landscaping, beautiful view sheds that many other communities have?" Well, that is, if we don't control the type of growth we have, but still allow the growth, we will have the type of results we've had for many years in some of these hillsides. So thank you all for your hard work, and this is a day we will all be celebrating in northeast Los Angeles. Thank you.
There's no further speakers in the queue, so Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Twelve eyes.
All right, we'll go back in order, our next item.
You can listen to city council meetings, as well as committee and commission meetings, on the telephone by using the city's council phone system. In the downtown area, dial two-one-three-six-two-one-CITY. In West LA, dial three-one-zero-four-seven-one-CITY. For the San Pedro area, dial three-one-zero-five-four-seven-CITY. And in the San Fernando Valley, dial eight-one-eight-nine-zero-four-nine-four-five-zero. Just follow the recorded instructions for the meetings you want to hear. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at ten a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at ten a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at nine-thirty a.m. and six-thirty p.m., and on Sunday at nine-thirty a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending November twenty-eighth, two thousand eight. On behalf of Camila Chilcot and everyone here at Channel Thirty-Five, I'm Jack Popejoy, thanking you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review. Santa here, wanting to remind you about all of the Hollywood holiday events that you're going to see right here on Channel Thirty-Five. In fact, if you look right here at the bottom of the screen, it'll tell you when the next broadcast is going to occur, and it's going to happen all month long, right here on Channel Thirty-Five. Have a wonderful holiday season! (Laughter)
Good morning, and welcome to Council Chambers, Van Nuys City Hall. This is a meeting of Los Angeles City Council. We're awaiting a quorum. Today is Friday, December fifth. Council meets three times a week, on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. All meetings are open to the public. For those who cannot make it to City Hall, meetings are televised via cable on Channel Thirty-Five, or can be viewed by visiting our website, www.lacity.org. Audio of our meeting is available on council phone by dialing two-one-three-six-two-one-CITY. I'm Councilmember Dennis Zein. I'm joined by council members Alarcon Labonge, Parks, Smith, Wesson. We're waiting additional council members to arrive. I would like to ask Councilmembers, Smith, we will be doing a presentation in a moment. If you would like to be heard on items listed on today's agenda, or general public comment for items not on the agenda, but under our jurisdiction, you can fill out a speaker's card, available at the back of the council chamber here in Van Nuys or at Los Angeles City Hall. Again, we are waiting a quorum to arrive, but we begin with presentations. And Councilmember Greg Smith, the great wealth district, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. President. I got a constituent over here, too. I got two. It's a great day, it's a great day. But thank you, Mr. President. It's a pleasure to be here today to recognize one of our truly great city employees, one of those people who work behind the scenes, that make the city work well. But unfortunately, after thirty-three years of service to the City of L.A., our star of the day, our honoree, our retiree, has left city service to retire, and we want to wish her the best of everything. Roberta Ann Amasron is a resident in Northridge. She has completed thirty-three years of conscientious, loyal, and dedicated service to the City of L.A. Ann began her career of the City of Los Angeles in nineteen-seventy-five as the Department of Building and Safety clerk typist. She did what all good employees are encouraged to do, and she advanced quickly through the ranks. She was promoted to senior clerk typist in nineteen-seventy-nine with the Fire Department, then advanced to accounting aide, and then to accountant with the Department of Public Works in nineteen-eighty. She later became a senior accountant at the Department of General Services in nineteen-eighty-three, and then back to Department of Building and Safety, where she became a principal accountant in nineteen-eighty-six, and then became really important to the department as her role as a chief accountant-two and a chief accountant-number-three in two thousand and five, where she served until her retirement just a couple of months ago. Ann's conscientious leadership, entirely ethic, will have vast benefits to the City of L.A. for her financial expertise and the practices that she brought to the City of L.A. Ann has repeatedly displayed tremendous creativity in finding solutions to complex financial problems, and certainly, we need you right now. We really need you to stay, because we got the most financial complex problems we've ever seen. And also, effectively organizing and maintaining huge volumes of current and historical financial data related to hundreds of millions of dollars. That has been a crucial in providing sound financial and fiscal management and legal foundation for the City of Los Angeles citywide. Ann has made essential and innovative contributions to the creation, design, and maintenance of the Los Angeles Department of Building and Safety Enterprise Fund. And I might add that over the last few years, as we've had to look at financial constraints on that department, it was those savings and that enterprise fund that saved, I think it was a hundred and four jobs, so your work was critical to the Department of Building and Safety. She's also made significant contribution to the many vital electronic fiscal programs of the city, building and safety, and citywide accounting systems, including e-payroll system and e-permits program. Ann has shown admirable initiative and dedication to the public service in times of crisis by serving on an advisory role to the executive management to overcome significant department, administrative, and financial challenges, which helped the city in several disaster responses, including getting reimbursement from the federal government for millions and millions of dollars from the federal government for disaster work. These are the kind of employees that don't get the public attention that some of us get, and certainly, general managers get, but these are the people that make our city run effectively, efficiently, and make it a great city. And when I look as a member of the Budget and Finance Committee and trying to wring out every savings we can find, it's people like Ann and the work she did to give us efficient accounting systems that make all that possible. And so it's my pleasure to be here with Representative of the Department of Building and Safety, to recognize Ann for her tremendous thirty-three years of service to the city as a whole, but in the recent decade and a half or so with the Department of Building and Safety. And would I like, is there a representative of the Department?
Yes.
Mr. Chan?
Ray Chan, Executive Officer of Department of Building and Safety. Just now, Councilmember Smith said a lot of things about Ann, not quite enough, in my view. However, I don't know what else I could add to it to make the story more complete. But in summary, I just have to say that Ann is so valuable to us because she has been a pillar of the Department of Building and Safety financial system. She is so valuable, and we did follow Councilmember Smith's advice, that she's so valuable, especially during this challenging time, that we're so happy that Ann accepted our ninety-days contract offer, and she'll be back here to help us to go through this challenging time. So thank you very much, Ann.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And Ann, on behalf of this grateful city council, citizens of L.A., we want to present you with this plaque of thirty years' service plus ninety days. We'll add that on in the bottom, plus ninety days. But thank you so much for everything. Would you like to say a word of goodbye?
I think what I'd like to say is, it's been a great time working, thirty-three years for the city. It's been fun, it's been a lot of work over all the years. I've never had an easy job here, but it's been great. I've never had an easy job here, but it's been great. So, thank all of you.
Thank you so much, Ann. Congratulations, and thank you very much. Our next presentation, Mr. Cardenas. For two presentations for Mr. Cardenas.
I know I could probably use these, but these are some reading glasses. Anybody leave some reading glasses up here? Okay. I might need them back.
You could, same for the future, Mr. Cardenas. Same for the future.
Well, I already need them. I'm just in denial. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to bring Michael Agian up. Today, I have the distinct privilege of honoring Michael Agian, a dedicated young man who has exemplified true public service and has been an outstanding leader in the deaf and hard-of-hearing community. While obtaining his sociology degree from Cal State Northridge, Michael led a campaign to help found both the National Center on Deafness and Deaf Awareness Week. His leadership skills were also recognized by his fellow peers, who elected him to be the first and only deaf person to be named as Chair of the University Student Board of Directors. After leaving California State Northridge, Michael went on to serve for 10 years as an advocate for youth with disabilities programs while specializing in outreach to young Latino and African-American children. As an active and talented member of the deaf community, Michael founded Project L-I-F-T, Lift. Learn, Inspire, Focus, Teach. An outreach program that strives to inspire the minority deaf community to engage in active leadership and community service. Additionally, Michael has presented the deaf community, represented the deaf community in a number of various public service organizations, including the Governing Board of the National Youth Leadership Network, the Americorps National Civilian Community Corps, Public Allies Los Angeles, and the California Youth Leadership Forum. As an intern in my office for the last five years, Michael has played an instrumental role in our hosting of the annual Deaf Festival of Los Angeles. While his selfless efforts and dedicated service will be extremely missed, we wish him our very best as he continues his outreach efforts to the deaf community in the mayor's office. At this time, I'd like to ask Michael to come forward and communicate his thoughts with us.
I just want to thank you to the council for giving this opportunity. I just want to say that our community, you know, what I do is not about me, but about community, and by doing what I do, it changes every day, step by step. Thank you.
Congratulations to you. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
So it's with this resolution, the City Council joined with me and the constituents of Los Angeles, including the Sixth Council District, in honoring Michael Agian for his selfless commitment to providing youth living with disabilities the opportunity to serve, to educate, learn, and experience a life without boundaries. Thank you, and congratulations, Michael.
Congratulations, Michael. Good job. That concludes our presentation. Mr. Cardenas, did you have a second presentation? Okay, that concludes our presentations for today. We're still waiting the arrival of Mr. Weiss, Mr. Rosendahl, Ms. Hahn for a quorum. We do not have a quorum at this time, so we're going to hold until Mr. Weiss, Mr. Rosendahl, Ms. Hahn arrive. So we're going to go into a hold mode back at the studio until we get our quorum.
Good morning. Thank you to all of you for your patience. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Grill, Hahn, Weezer, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes?
Yes, Mr. Wesson moves, Mr. Weiss seconds.
Next are commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those will be approved.
Item number one is an item notice for public hearing. This is a determination of public convenience or necessity in Council District Five. Findings and recommendations are required, and a motion is required.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss? Mr. Weiss makes the motion to move it? That item is now before us, an item one. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Next order?
Next are items two through seven. Those are items which public hearings have been held. Reports have been submitted for three, and item number seven. There is indication that on item number four, an amending motion is being circulated, and so that should be held on the desk.
Thank you. Colleagues, any items which you want to call special? This is items two through seven?
Seven, please.
Seven? Okay. Mr. Weiss? Okay. Any other items? If not, Madam Clerk, two? Okay. Not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the remaining items, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Those items will be approved. Was there a motion required for the HCD report on item number three? Are we okay with that?
Yes, a motion is required, but that's all right.
Okay. Thank you. And item five, I believe, wants to go forthwith.
Yes.
Thank you. Next items?
Next are items number eight through 15, and those are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. Madam President, for item number 14B, as in boy, the department requests to have that item received and filed in as much as fees are still owed on that property.
Okay.
Also, for item number 15, there is a request to continue this to Tuesday, December 9th.
That will be the order? Any specials, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Thank you.
Madam President, for the record, eight through 13 are ordinances, and so those ordinances will carry forward till December 12th.
Thank you. Next items?
Next are, there are motions for posting a referral, so...
Okay, we'll wait to the end of the meeting for those. Go back to public comments.
Public comment.
Thank you. I'd like to call the first four individuals, colleagues, and if we could have quiet in the chambers. Chuck Tenen, Noel Weiss, Richard Kearns, and Reverend, and these are actually two of those, these are downtown. So the first we'll take here is Chuck Tenen, Noel Weiss, and then we will go to those that are downtown today. Mr. Tenen?
Good morning, councilmembers. Madam Chairman, President. Gang violence, affordable housing, the city having no money to spend on public needs, traffic, youth programs, enforcement of city laws and ordinances, public support and funding for the people of this city that need our help. Like a song that's being done says, "Let's put love back in the streets." That means City Hall, City Council, City Agencies. We need a clean path in 2009 and a smooth road to make this city a healthy environment to live in. And you know, it's funny, I thought of something the other day. People and elephants have something in common: health, happiness, life, freedom, and compassion among one another. And the public officials in our city also need to have respect for one another like we have respect for you. I want to bring up a sad incident that happened several months ago. There was an 89-year-old crippled lady with a cane that came downtown to City Council, came from CD District Five, all the way just to shake hands and wish the council member a happy holiday. She had that opportunity. He came right by her, and she extended her hand and said, "Councilman, I want to wish you a happy holiday." And he went by and snubbed her and went and sat down with the young lady. We don't need someone running for City Attorney's Office that has no compassion for people, especially constituents.
Mr. Tenen, we need to focus on the issues that are here before us, not on personal things.
And on a brighter note, gee, Tom Labonge is big Christmas party, street party tonight. All the Pink's hot dogs you can eat, you should go there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chuck. Mr. Weiss?
Thank you. Councilmembers, my name is Noel Weiss. I first wanted to thank the over 40 circulators and 1,300 people who signed my petition. I qualified to run against Mr. Weiss and others for City Attorney, and I look forward to that opportunity. With regard to going forward here, I think one of the core key issues of the campaign is going to be what is the role of the office of the City Attorney? And I think we need to reach a new era in the politics of this city where we're taught, because there's a new era in the country, a practical, progressive, can-do kind of of an approach. And unfortunately, to date, the City Attorney's Office has not, has unfortunately run interference for the political interests of the councilmembers, where the gap between the performance and the promise is just not there. And I think it's time, basically, that the City Attorney's Office begin to represent the people as opposed to the narrow political interests or the narrow special interests, specifically with regard to the billboard issue. And again, what we're talking about is Mr. Weiss is taking a lead role in this. Unfortunately, he was nowhere to be found the last couple of years. In fact, bottom line is, we've got people wanting to know where all of the signs are located. That information is basically available now. Mr. Weiss has it. He's got people basically running around, not being able to know what's going on. I think it's important, going forward, that, we're talking about a settlement agreement. Mr. Weiss says that the settlement agreement somehow violates the SECA laws. You know, I gotta say, it's really incredible to me that this is public comment, so you know what? Nobody on the council, unfortunately, is listening, just for the sake. And by the way, this represents the problem, because, again, the lack of respect for the public by our elected representatives is really got to change. And I gotta tell you, if I'm City Attorney, it's gonna change. It's not right for the people who will come, who take their time and to come here and try to talk to you people, and you don't listen. It's just simply not right. Going forward, I call on Mr. Weiss to waive, to have the council waive the attorney-client privilege so the public can get into the bowels of that decision, why they did a settlement agreement, and basically more on that later, because my time is basically run out.
Thank you very much, Mr. ...
Thank you, people.
We're gonna go downtown to Richard Kearns, Reverend Patrick Duff, Edward Fortune, Ali Rossi, Antonio Coronado, and Arnold Sacks will all be downtown. So we could start with Mr. Kearns.
Hey, good morning. My name is Richard Kearns. I'm a 57-year-old gay man alive with AIDS for more than 20 years. I'm a long-term survivor. I'm an AIDS activist. I am a medical cannabis patient and advocate. I am Poet Secretary of the Patient Advocacy Network. I'm here today because the DEA, backed up by the LAPD, raided a church, the Liberty Bell Temple in Silver Lake. Agents supported by LAPD officers also broke into Reverend Duff's residence, not covered in the 30-page search warrant that editorializes about the California Attorney General's medical cannabis guidelines. Asians issued no receipt for the cash and medicine they took. I expect you will be hearing more details in a bit. I'm here to offer you a broad perspective on this discussion and request that you add reconvening the working group to the City Attorney's and the City Attorney's Ordnance Report to next week's agenda. Let's start with a more familiar form of alternative medicine, traditional Chinese medicine, what we call acupuncture. It is informed by both Daoist and Buddhist religious traditions. The Daoist tradition pretty much became the hard-science acupuncture crew, electromagnetic wave tracking. The Buddhists view acupuncture as meditation and prayer and worship for both the patient and the provider. Both are all, they're all state-licensed. More mainstream, think of all the hospitals founded and kept alive as a matter of faith through good works. What is the article of faith at the core of the DEA's disrespect? They're just doing it to get high. It's only an excuse. They rely upon stigma to support outdated, unpopular, unjust, and lethal drug law. Odetta died this week. She sang, "Oh, freedom, oh, freedom, oh, freedom over me, and before I be a slave, I'd be buried in my grave and go home to my Lord and be free." She said, "You're walking down life's road. Society's foot is on your throat, every which way you turn, you can't get from under that foot, and you reach a fork in the road, and you can either lie down and die or insist on your life." I insist on my life. Please put us on the agenda next week. Thank you very much.
Reverend Patrick Duff, followed by Edward Fortune?
Good afternoon, City Council. I thank you for hearing us. On Tuesday of this week, our church was raided by the federal government and the local government assisted, particularly Officer Gonzalez. The reason that they gave on the search warrant for coming in was that they received, somebody received a flyer, and they were offended at the flyer that advertised our church and what we did. And I'm just a little concerned when communities like Crenshaw and Englewood have people dying on the streets, open-air drug sales, crack, heroin, cocaine, methamphetamines running wild in our country, and our Drug Enforcement Administration and local enforcement decide that since somebody's offended by a flyer, that they're gonna come into my church with machine guns, put to my friends, my people's heads, put to my landlord's head, who is in the back who's 71-years-old, who was forced to open his building without a search warrant. They broke my door down. They stole all my personal items from my house. They went through my personal stuff, my underwear, my socks. They even stole my identification from my house just for fun. No receipt, nothing. I'm gonna be coming here Tuesday with the patients that I help with wheelchairs, MS, muscular dyspharynx, AIDS, and all the other things that I give free medication to. I think the reason the DEA came to see me is because I do things the right way. And the reason they don't arrest me, and it's the second time they raided me, is because they can't find 12 jurors to convict me. But they found the audacity to come in because of a flyer and put mach- But they found the audacity to come in because of a flyer and put machine guns to my friends' heads and attempted to shoot my dog, and my security officer had to step in front of the dog...
Thank you. If I could ask you to conclude, please.
Or they were gonna shoot him.
Edward Fortune? Edward Fortune? Thank you.
Again, as the other two speakers said, on Tuesday, the DEA came in on one of their thieving raids. I wasn't at the location where that particular incident happened, but they mentioned the location that I run and are threatening to come there also. And my question to City Council is, if state law, if several recent court decisions have said, "These state officers, city police officers aren't supposed to be assisting or aren't supposed to be using federal law to enforce federal law," then why are the city police officers assisting federal officers coming to our legal locations and basically stealing? I want to ask if you can please put these issues on the agenda for next week. Next week, I plan on coming, next Tuesday, along with several of my patients, and also to, you know, bring to your attention that the city is still assisting the federal officers when they come and steal. And I'd also like to make the court and the City Attorney aware that I believe that the state officers or city officers who are assisting the feds are putting the city, the state, liable for a civil suit. And I'd just like to, again, request that you put this item on the agenda and to note that we're contemplating a civil suit against the officers who are assisting in these thieving raids. Thank you.
Ali Rossi, followed by Antonio Coronado, excuse me.
Greetings in the name of the Most High God, Jarashtafara. I want to thank the people of LA, people, and City Council, and I ask you all to be positive continually, and I ask you not to help in no way or to also stop the breach of any temple, not just our temple, any temple, because the breach of a temple today can be a breach of your home tomorrow. I ask you all, and I ask you all to pray, whatever language you pray in, or whatever way you can pray, for peace and love. And I say, "The Most High God, bless California and bless us all. One love."
Thank you. Mr. Coronado, followed by Arnold Sacks.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Tony Coronado, and I work for ViTech Security. I've been doing security now for about sixteen years. I've worked at banks, I've worked at movie theaters, warehouses, and the last couple of years I've been working at Miracle Mauna dispensaries. On December second, about twelve-twenty in the afternoon, the DEA came to Liberty Bell Temple, which where I am now employed by ViTech, came in and raided the place. I cordially opened the door, assisted every agent to their line of questioning and their procedure. Afterwards, about three o'clock in the afternoon, I was taken from the rebel, taken to 255 Temple Street in the federal building and kept there for a couple hours, and then questioned. At that point, several of the agents have told me that I need to stop working at the dispensaries. I just felt that I wasn't given due process. I wasn't charged with anything, but yet all my equipment was taken from me. No receipt was given to me whatsoever. I was escorted, therefore, afterwards, outside the building and told to leave. My question, or what I want to present here is that Liberty Bell Temple has been one of the, has one of the strictest guidelines I've seen in any dispensaries I've worked at. They do everything according to California state law. That's why Mr. Duff has two guards there for protection, not only of the property, the people, but also for the patients as well. I'd just like the City Council just to look and investigate as to the practices of the DEA, and if they need any assistance from me or any more line of questioning, that I would do so next time in council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Arnold Sacks? Mr. Sacks?
Just good morning. Unless you live in a cage, a cave, you'd be aware that the bailouts have been making public news lately, and a lot of the problems are being, a lot of the reasons being questioned are because of the poor management decisions. The state and the city are suffering through a budget crisis. The governor and the mayor are looking to raise fees, taxes, and they're gonna require employees to take paid days off or days off without pay. But I've yet to hear from anybody, either one of the leaders, requiring, making requests for legislators to forego any of their perks or a salary reduction. The legislative extras are paid for by the state taxpayers, who will be asked to shoulder the pain of the state and the city budget deficits. When will the legislative bodies of the state and/or the city, the highest-paid elected officials in the country, shoulder not their share of the deficit, but a share of this deficit, trying to eliminate it? I'd also like to point out that it was mentioned, the future City Attorney, Noel Weiss, mentioned the fiasco with the billboards, and how long that's been going on, like three or four years. How come the city can move so quickly to spay and neuter animals, to get a fee for license fees that way, but take four or five years to go after billboards? And then, in a moment of legislative law or request, you had a request, item four was amendment passed around there, but the amendment wasn't circulated in City Council chambers. So I'd like to know that we'd have an opportunity to talk on that item, as it's a new item. And item seven, please make an announcement that, since it was held, if public comment can be reopened. Have to ask these questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Actually, item number four, we're going to continue, and so that item will be continued until what date, Madam Clerk?
Tuesday, December ninth.
Be Tuesday, December ninth, so you'll be able to access that amendment as well. So we'll go back to public comment here in San Fernando Valley. I'd like to ask Ted Bradpeace, Sister June Wilkinson, Missy Blackstock, and Teri Halverson to please come forward. We're gonna call four names at a time, that'll help expedite. So again, Ted Bradpeace, Mr. Bradpeace? Sister June Wilkinson, Missy Blackstock, Teri Halverson.
Good morning, members of the council. I'm here on behalf of Sun Valley Chamber of Commerce to ask you to please consider approving the Providence Holy Cross expansion. This is a critically needed facility in the San Fernando Valley and in the Los Angeles city area. The jobs that this would provide, the medical care that is greatly needed in the area, is something that is just beyond comprehension, what good it can do to the community, what good it can do for people in the area, and keeping jobs and money in the city of Los Angeles. This is something that's good for the benefit of the people of Los Angeles and extremely crucial, and I strongly urge the council to move forward and approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Sister June?
Hi, I am Missy Blackstock.
Oh, Missy Blackstock.
I'm sorry. ER manager over at Holy Cross. We serve a vital importance within the community, and we don't turn anybody away. And there is, just this month, in November, five-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand jobs were cut, at a thirty-four-year-high. Holy Cross construction will provide a thousand jobs a day, just for the construction alone, and two-hundred-and-fifty jobs a day to employ the new department, the new building. The emergency room alone has been through many disasters, the MetroLink being, of course, the number-one priority one that we just had. And without having the beds available, we can't serve the community. We close our doors to the community, and we really need to get this tower built. I mean, just think, if one of your family members came in with a heart attack and we had to treat him in the hall, don't you think that every patient deserves the right to be treated with respect and dignity and, you know, provide great care? We're not asking for anything that we shouldn't be getting.
My name is Sister June Wilkinson, and I've worked with the outreach program at the hospitals. I'd just like to say one thing to the members of this committee, and that's, I'd like you to focus on the people. That might be something that would help you understand the situation we're in. We're bringing, as the last speaker said, a lot of jobs to the community. We're also providing excellent medical care. We're a magnet nursing program, which means we're top five percent in the nation. We're nationally recognized as a trauma program, and we were recently voted one of the places, the best places to work in the San Fernando Valley. As a nonprofit organization, we turn our profits back into the community. I've worked on the outreach program. I was director of the tattoo removal program for ex-gang members. We also have programs going into schools to help foster health. We have elderly programs. We go out into the community to help the people. So in considering your reactions and your voting for the hospital or on the hospital issue, please remember the people that we're serving and the importance of helping them get what they need. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Teri Halverson, followed by Martha Diaz-Ascanazi, followed by Kathy Carter, and then Stuart Waldman.
I am an emergency room nurse at Holy Cross Hospital. I am the first face that you might see when you come through the door, yourselves or your family members. I will look at you, I will assess you, and I will determine that you have an emergent condition, and then I will look for a bed for you, because on any given day, we have sixteen of our thirty-three emergency department beds occupied by inpatient, inpatients, because there are no rooms for them upstairs. This is a daunting task. It involves your health, and it really puts me at risk. We are there to save lives, promote health, and we are challenged to do that. And we saw as our salvation this new building, a hundred-and-one new beds to house your family members. And so, along with Sister Wilkinson and the rest of the Providence Holy Cross and the Providence team at large, and the community who has raised the money for this building, we ask that you would consider to go forward on this project on behalf of yourselves and your families. And remember, we are one of the premier health vendors in this community. We are one of the busiest trauma centers in Los Angeles County, and we want to give you the best service we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you. Martha?
Good morning. I'm Martha Diaz-Ascanazi. I'm a local business owner in the Northeast Valley and a proud member of the Ministry Board. I am here to echo what everybody else is saying about this hospital. We are the good guys. We are doing a good job in our community. We provide jobs, high-paying jobs. Our nurses are happy. We wouldn't have gotten the Nurse Magnet Program without that. I don't know if you realize, but there are very few hospitals that can boast that. We're providing high-paying construction jobs that have been stopped. We will provide high-paying jobs for our community members. In a time when people are looking for bailouts, we're providing opportunities, and it's being taken away. This is a good hospital that's mission-driven. We are committed to quality, to top-quality medical care for anybody that comes there. Our mission is to take care of the poor and the vulnerable, and that could be any one of us at any given time. We will take in people from everywhere. We're an open catchment area for our trauma, so if you're on your way to Las Vegas and something happened, you might end up there. So I urge you to please, please, take control of the situation and see that people are involved here. We are kind-hearted, we are qualified, and we are ready, and we are stopped for no reason other than I don't know what, and I would urge you to please cut through that, take the vote, and let us open our hospital and continue to do what we do best.
Thank you. Kathy Carter, followed by Stuart Waldman, followed by Gary Fordice.
Hello, my name is Kathy Carter. I'm also an emergency room nurse there at Providence Holy Cross. I don't want to re-say pretty much what Teri said, but I can certainly echo that. I've been there for over seventeen years in the emergency department, and I can tell you, in that time, we've had three local hospitals close already, close their doors. So that's been an impact for us. The big thing I want to say is I belong to the Emergency Nursing Association, and I just, they just released a report that was sent out by the CDC, the Center for Disease Control. It's very interesting, and I think you all know. The title is "Increase in ED Visits Reported by the CDC." It says, "According to new health care statistics released by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, patients in the United States made up one-hundred-and-nineteen-point-two-million visits to the EDs in 2006." They say this is up from one-hundred-and-fifteen million in 2005. Meanwhile, over the ten-year period, there's been a decrease in about five percent of the EDs across the country. Probably the most disturbing thing is that the ED has served as a route of admission to hospital for inpatients for over fifty percent of the patients. So we are the primary doors where these patients come through. They say that these reports attribute to the increase in the ED and general medical visits to an aging populations, and these are their words and not mine. They say, "This raises concerns about the possibility of catastrophic ED crowding in a few years." This is what we're looking forward to. This is why we're trying to expand, so we can see these crowds that are expected. It's disturbing to me to think that any elected official would be swayed by any special interest group at all. We're talking about patients' lives. We're not talking about special interest groups. Our support, your support, is needed for us at the hospital and the community to take care of these patients, not for a special interest group. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart Waldman, Gary Fordice, Candido Merez, and Richard Hopp.
Good morning. I'm Stuart Waldman, president of ViCA, the Valley Industry and Commerce Association. I'll be brief, but I want to address an issue that is vitally important for many of us in the valley. ViCA wholeheartedly supports the expansion of Providence Holy Cross Medical Center, moving forward as soon as possible to get these beds and services online. With the numerous hospital closures in Los Angeles and in the valley, and especially in light of the recent disasters we've experienced in the valley, including the MetroLink tragedy and the numerous fires, Holy Cross has played a pivotal role in treating the injured and has been essential to saving numerous lives. Since the construction has been halted due to recent court action, a hundred-and-fifty construction workers who were working on the Holy Cross project have been pulled off the work site and are facing the holidays without work or a paycheck to help them to feed their families and buy gifts for their children. The Holy Cross project, with its project labor agreement, meant that these were good-paying construction jobs with good union benefits. In addition, once the expansion is completed, there will be two-hundred-and-fifty additional permanent health care jobs at Holy Cross at an average hourly rate of thirty-seven dollars an hour. These jobs, too, are now in jeopardy unless the City Council votes once again, as you did last year, to let this project go forward. Since construction is halted, the jobs that would have been created in the valley as a result of Holy Cross's growth have now also not been created, and it's a further disappointment to the valley. On behalf of ViCA, we respectfully urge you to support Holy Cross and vote, as you did last year, to allow the expansion project at Holy Cross to move forward now. Thank you.
Gary Fordice?
Good morning, honorable council members. My name is Gary Fordice, and I am a survivor. I thank God in His faithful sermons at Holy Cross Hospital for my presence here today. My death was formally announced in Holy Cross Emergency Room on May twentieth, two thousand and three. I was dead for twenty cumulative minutes. Miraculously, Holy Cross did not give up on me. And although I lie in a coma for two-and-a-half weeks, received dialysis for five-and-a-half weeks, virtually guaranteed brain damage, I survived a massive heart attack, and I stand before you a miracle.
Bravo, bravo.
A second event, three years later with complications, another ICU stay... A second event, three years later with complications, another ICU stay, and again a miracle I stand before you. Honorable council members, you and our community are caught up in a legal and political quagmire. This council, the Mission Hills Neighborhood Council, and the community at large have all approved the Holy Cross expansion, and now the quagmire threatens previous commitments. The San Fernando Valley has lost 400 beds, and the Holy Cross expansion promises to restore 101 of those beds. Walk by the doctor's dining room at Holy Cross Hospital and on the door a sign reads, "Code Bed Control Level 3: Volume Exceeding Capacity." Honorable council members, time is life. Relocation to another hospital is time delay. How many lives do we risk? I appeal for your support. Please, proceed with a fair and diligent process, wasting no time and no lives. Please reaffirm your previous commitment to Holy Cross and our community. My deepest desire is to return and again stand before this council with others, and thank, and they and I, thank you for our lives. Thank you for this opportunity to appeal our mutual cause.
Thank you very much. Candito Merez, Richard Hopps, and Dr. Dan Weissman.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm honored to follow Mr. Jack Fordice, and again, I too would support Holy Cross. And I want to thank the great councilman from the 12th District, Mr. Greg Smith. Thank you for listening. The cameras can't show it, but a lot of times it looks like a lot of you don't care or that you're not paying attention, but for those of you who are listening and at least making eye contact, we appreciate that. I want to thank you again for, yes, Mr. Carton, as you were too. I, you were.
All right, me too. Okay.
Yes, yes, absolutely. There we go. The thing is, I want to thank you all for being here. It's December 1st, the holidays are here, and again, thank you for coming out to the Valley. Mr. Parks, it's an honor to have you here, sir. We will always welcome you here. This is part of your home. You're always welcome in there. If you ever get tired of living there, and you come out here, we'll take good care of you. And Ms. Hahn, I want to thank you again for your gang initiative and missed by so little. But you know what? Your dream will come true one day, and we're going to make it happen, and we just, we just thank you for that. But again, thank you all for being here, and I hope that we do follow up on the Holy Cross. It's needed, and just again, I want to wish you happy holidays, and please, if you'll just give the public a little of your time, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Richard?
Good morning. Councilman Rosenthal, I just want to say thank you and also your staff for being such a mensch when I ask a public records request. You respond, you do it as an open-hand policy, and you do it as Nordstrom's customer service. That also echoes to Councilman Parks. When I've ever needed something, your staff has always tried. Might not succeed, but have always tried, and I appreciate that. I really do. Now we're going to get to Councilman Weiss. You don't care. You don't care.
Sir, if you could direct your comments to the council members, please.
You don't respond to public records requests properly. Your staff is always on a Starbucks break.
Excuse me, Madam President. The speaker should direct his comments to the council as a whole.
Under Government Code 6253.1, when a person needs help to do their public records requests, the government entity has a requirement to help. It doesn't happen. There's always an issue, and it's very disappointing. You're going to end up leading me into litigation for failure to respond to public records requests. The law requires it. I know you don't care, and I, that really hurts me. It really does. Why can't you maybe contact maybe Mr. Rosenthal's office regarding on how to try to give something called customer service? Just asking for customer service. You guys need more time. I have no problem tolling time beyond the 10 days and the 14-day extension. If you need 30 or 60 days more, that's not a problem. City Clerk gets it from me when they request it, not a problem. But I get a, this response after I've asked for about 10 different items, "Our office has no documents related to this request." Under the code, if it's under your control, you're required to do it. Obviously, you don't care. Shame on you, coward.
Dr. Dan Weissman, followed by Christine Rowe, followed by Joanne Yavne Garb.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Thank you so much for coming to Van Nuys, to the San Fernando Valley. As a 25-year member of most of the hospitals of this community, I want to support the improvements necessary for Holy Cross and frankly, for the West Hills Neighborhood Hospital, because these are the last of the 18 hospitals that were in this community. Now, I have so many things to tell you, I just don't know where to start. You know my concern for the rules of this organization, and I'm taking some film of you right now, because I believe it's very important for the people who spend their time to come to public comment, to see you in your chairs and to see the eye contact that I've been receiving. I thank you for that at this point. You'll get more of that in writing. The solar initiative that's come before us has many big parts and is very, very empty. We need to get very much involved and get our neighborhood councils very much involved in all the details that need to be fleshed out before that solar initiative is of importance. I must spend some time here talking about public access. A death of a dear friend on Wednesday prevented me from being here when you had the deliberations. As most of you know, and many of you have been guests on my program, and I've had the privilege and the great joy of interviewing you. I hope to have produced 156 programs of value to the city and to all of us, and I hope you will do what is necessary to continue public access. It's an extremely important expression of the First Amendment rights that we all hold so dear. You heard a little bit earlier about medical marijuana from several very passionate people downtown. I put my views before you before, and I'll put them anywhere that it's necessary. The problem that we do not have.
I could just ask you to conclude.
I'm in my last sentence, thank you. The problem that we do not have true medical marijuana dispensation is because it is not done by doctors. Any little written note by anyone putting an M.D. after his name can provide marijuana to people.
A little longer than one sentence, Mr. Weissman, so thank you.
I use compound complex sentences.
Thank you very much for your presence today. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Weissman. Christine Rowe, followed by Joanne Yavne Garb.
Good morning, Madam President and city council members. As a board member of the West Hills Neighborhood Council, I was doing some research on Councilman Smith's council district. I had heard there were elections in March, and I was not sure which council members were up for reelection. I have never had the opportunity to meet with Greg Smith, but I have met numerous members of his staff, so was very pleased to find this video on YouTube, I have a copy of it from here, that was from Greg Smith's campaign. In it, he speaks of the importance of neighborhood councils. He believes that the neighborhood councils know best what is going on in their community, what streets need to be fixed, what trees need to be trimmed, et cetera. That was very reassuring to me, because the West Hills Neighborhood Council has been involved in a zoning change for a project in his district called Corporate Point. I personally have studied this site since about February of this year. It was such a top-secret site that even 50, even DTSC and the LA Regional Board did not know about the site being more than 50 years old. So I actually filed a FOIA with the DOE for this site to see why the regional board is sampling for radionuclides on this property in adjacent neighborhoods. As a result of a great deal of time and research by West Hills Neighborhood Council Board members and after listening to the developer Trammell Crow and community members, we have voted two months in a row to oppose a manufacturing zone change for this property. More than 1,300 West Hills residents have opposed this zone change. I am glad that Greg Smith believes in the neighborhood council system, because this video, I believe that he will listen to our West Hills Neighborhood Council and approve, or to, I'm sorry, to oppose the zone change to M zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, all members. I'm glad to see you all here. In researching the Corporate Point, because I'm on the West Hills Neighborhood Council, and I live about seven blocks due east of Corporate Point, in a planning and zoning committee meeting of our council, I said, "Well, what about the West Hills Community Plan?" And they said, "Oh, this area is not part of the West Hills Community Plan. There is no such thing as a West Hills Community Plan. What there is, is that north of Roscoe, this is part of the Chatsworth Porter Ranch Community Plan, which allows for the industrial parks in Chatsworth." And I was actually appalled to note that we are part of Chatsworth. My address is West Hills. Why can we not have our own community plan? We have 45,000 residents. We have a shopping center. We have a lot of businesses in our area. What is to stop us from having our own community plan so that we, as a neighborhood, can speak to the issues of what's going on there? So I thank you for letting me speak my mind, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you, Joanne. We're going to go back downtown. We have two cars, our last public speaker cards. Zuma Dog, followed by Matt Dowd.
Yes, it feels good, y'all. Let the people see what Zuma Dog official candidate for mayor looks like. That's right. Thank you so much to everybody. I got over 1,000 signatures, easily qualified. Thank you for LA Times. Thank you for everybody in the city of Los Angeles, from Marina Del Rey all the way to El Sereno and across the city, who signed Zuma Dog's petition for mayor. It does mean the people want change. If they didn't want change, why would they sign my ballot? And so thank you so much. I'd also have breaking news, breaking news, Home Depot, they have been denied their exemption for an EIR. They wanted to get out of their EIR. They have been denied that permit. They will have to go through with the EIR, which means we probably won't be seeing a Home Depot in Sonland, Tahunga. Congratulations to all the people. They're going to have to, and also, I'd like to say, look for Zuma Dog. And LA Weekly Public Access has been such a discussion here in chambers, and I'm sorry I wasn't here, council. I know Eric Garcetti made a comment that I wasn't here. I'm very sorry. I was turning in my petitions, getting verified and certified as a mayoral candidate. Yes, I'd love to be on top of y'all. I would love to be your bosses to take back the city. But look for LA Weekly, the next issue. We did a nice photo shoot with that. Jamil's Law, Jamil's Law, today is the last day, and if you'd like to meet the Shaw family, please go down to Denny's on Ramirez Downtown, right by the city clerk's office where Zuma Dog was verified for mayor. Denny's Ramirez off of Cesar Chavez and Vignes, sign the Jamil's Law petition. And I met some interesting relatives of council members today. We'll talk about that later. Now let's talk about also my article in Boulevard Sentinel. The Zuma Dog media frenzy is picking up. My article in the Boulevard Sentinel, some reasons we need to take back the city, Zuma Dog for mayor. You've got the city council that gives much of the money for the community and to the, every time there's billions of dollars to redevelop blight, what does council do? They hand it off to billionaires, and then they tax you to help fix the problem. Go to marrow9.com. It feels so good. Thanks for everybody who helped me become an official certified candidate, y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Matt Dowd.
Hey, thank you so much. I do believe it's probably the first time I've come downtown while you've been in Van Nuys. Wow, this is what I look like on TV? I love that. Anyway, Zuma's unmasked, it's out in the open, he's a mayoral candidate, so I got nothing to hide. What about the mayor? You know, I've seen him, doesn't look good now on the blogs, there's bad pictures of him associating with people who probably he shouldn't be at this point now. But I'm only, I'm only having a go at someone, because I was down, arriving at City Hall, and one of the security guys at General Services, Velasquez, at the front desk. He had to be an asshole. He had to be an asshole to me.
Sigh of your warning. Thank you.
And I'm Matt Dowd, I deserve better. I've been coming here a long time now.
Mr. Dowd, just stop. Mr. City Attorney? Yes?
Yeah, he should be warned.
Mr. Dowd?
Can you hold my time?
No, we cannot hold your time. We asked you, we've asked you not to use that language in the city council chambers.
That's not really a bad one. That's like mild is what I could probably say and get the warning. Dion, you're wasting your time with that, you know. See, I want to be nice. You know, I'd love to be nice, but they get me at the front gate. It's like sticking a pin into me as I walk through the door. What do you think? But I'd love to be nice. Thank you, city council. It's such a pleasure to be here and have this opportunity to address the city council downtown with this wonderful internet system that you have and the satellites and everything that can bring me. Hi Candy, Candy, I want to say hi to Candy at Van Nuys. I'll be missing you. When am I going to see you downtown?
That closes public comment period. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Item number two is called special by Councilmember Rosenthal.
I understand Mr. Rosenthal called that special for Mr. Alacon. Is that the case?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Hi, members. This item is, is the Green Business Program, as a green business certification program. This is a program that has been established in several jurisdictions throughout the state of California, including Berkeley, the Bay Area in general, where that Berkeley program has emerged into a coalition of green business advocates, the San Diego area, and Santa Monica. So I think we have traversed the entire length of the political spectrum in terms of urban-city jurisdictions to embrace the notion of creating a green business certification program. We have had this matter before council several times. The significance of today is that we are now able to initiate the program, because the Department of Water and Power has stepped forward with $150,000 grant, which means that the four industries that are being targeted, the lodging industry, the retail services industry, office space, office industry, and body shop industry will be included. We had a press conference just a couple of days ago, and our biggest supporter is the Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce, which is very encouraging, because they recognize that not only is green business the right thing to do, more importantly, they recognize that it's the future thing to do from an economic perspective. We need to grow our green business economy in the city of Los Angeles, and I believe that given the tremendous support for environmentalism that we have in Los Angeles, that green, that that includes our business community that would like to operate in a green fashion. So not only will we be looking for businesses who operate in a green fashion by reducing their ridership to work, by reducing their use of water and power and paper and all those things, we will also see this program as an educational opportunity to learn from the business community as to how to better green our business community, and we can expand that to other programs. I want to mention that the Community College District is very interested in, in fact, they are developing a green business program to create, an educational program to assist business in how to become more green. The bottom line is that the DWP stepping forward will enable us to address three of the four industries that we were targeting. The lodging industry was already ready to go without cost to the city of Los Angeles or significant costs, because that is a national program that, and the certification entity is willing to do it as part of their agenda. And so we are ready to go with the green business program. The action today will, will recommit us again to the green business certification program, and I anticipate that within a year, we will have dozens, if not hundreds, of businesses that are certified as green businesses in Los Angeles, and in doing so, we will create greater opportunities for Los Angeles to be the most environmentally pronounced city in the world. So with that, I urge your support and thank you for, and it's been unanimous at every stage of the process, so I want to thank you for your continued support on this matter. Been working on this for four years, started in the state senate, tried to get the governor to agree. He didn't do it, so we've got to do it from a local perspective, but eventually, all the cities, I believe, in the state will embrace it as well. So thank you so much for your previous support. I anticipate your support on this item, and let's go about getting the city of Los Angeles to create great opportunities for businesses that want to be green.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenthal?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Alacon, for your leadership on this. Could I ask staff to come up real quickly on this issue, so the public outside the room understands what we're talking about here? But I do want to do a shout-out first to Lawa and how they're doing. But I do want to do a shout-out first to Lawa and how they're doing it with the Tom Bradley Terminal, but the community groups that Mr. Alacon talked about, the chambers of commerce and what they do. I'm very proud of my Brentwood Chamber of Commerce and my Pacific Palisades, who worked with our office to put all those recycling bins throughout those areas. And I want to thank the Venice Neighborhood Council that went very aggressively to put those recycling all on Venice Beach. So as you go into the 11th district, we're going to have more recycling bins everywhere. Every public right-of-way, every street, we're going to have the bins so that everybody can recycle just naturally as they move around. Of course, what I care about in this motion is the Century Corridor and the hotels that we have there, which, by the way, colleagues, 35% of the city's bed tax comes from those hotels. So we want to thank them for that. Tell us what this program is, real quickly.
The LA Convention...
Your name for the record.
My name is Carol Martinez. I'm with LA Inc., the Los Angeles Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Yes.
And what we've done is, we have worked with the hotels to come up with a plan so that they can become certified green. And we already know, Councilman Rosendahl, that the hotels at the airport area are very excited about this program.
Yes.
Many of them are well on their way to getting green certification. Our office, Patty McGenett and Michael Kraus, met with hotels all over the city of Los Angeles, learned some really exciting things about what the hotels are doing to move forward on this program. And in a couple months, we will have a long list of hotels for you that are certified green.
And when they're certified, they get the seal of approval?
They get a seal of approval. They're part of a nationally recognized program that is, that the tourism industry all knows about, and that gives them extra credibility for bringing groups and meetings to Los Angeles that are concerned about the environment.
Okay, and quickly tell us, how do you get certified? What do you have to do?
You have to recycle your trash. You have to do environmentally friendly things. But the really good news for the hotels in Los Angeles is the DWP has several programs in place that will really help the hotels move forward and get this certification.
Please.
Karen Christie, the Environmental Affairs Department.
Great, Karen.
LA Inc. and the Visitors Bureau is working closely with Green Seal, a nationally recognized organization that has a checklist of standards for hotels already in place. And as you can see, there's a strong support in the hotel industry to move forward. So that'll be the first component of the green business certification program as a whole. We're going to go out with an RFP pretty quickly. We're working closely with DWP to use the funding that they put forward to do those other industries that Councilmember Alacon spoke of. Restaurants, there's a lot of support there. Also, the auto repair shops and general office and retail to really allow everyone citywide to become involved in this program. We're accepting requests for information from other businesses as well, and we'll try and bring other industries online according to the level of interest there. It's a voluntary program. Right now, businesses or individuals that are interested can go to our website, environmentla.org, and click on the link to the green business certification program to see the draft checklist right now to start to get prepared for what they could do as we approach, you know, releasing this program for applicants and try to get their business even more green than it already is. We've heard from a lot of business organizations that a lot of businesses are eager to do this and are ready to go, so they can look at those checklists and see how close they are, and then it should all come together just about in the beginning of next year.
I'm very excited about that, and the restaurant thing really hits my brain about, what do you do with your food scraps? And, you know, when they're really good, fresh and alive food scraps, they obviously should go to the poor, and so we don't throw them in the garbage if they're viable and worthy to eat. If they're not, we obviously need to do the composting or get it into the bin, the green bin, that could deal with the composting as well. The more we focus on being green, the better everybody will feel that we're doing the right steps. Do you want to add something real quickly to this? Please.
Just, I'm just excited about the program.
Name for the record.
Dee Allen, the general manager of Environment La, and Karen is the program manager. We're just excited to work with the council and the city on this program and businesses. It's a complete partnership, and we think it's just the right way to go.
And I just want to do a shout-out to all of my areas in the 11th district. It's an exciting program. I'm urging all of my neighborhood councils to take an interest in it and working with their chambers, working with all of their businesses. The greener we get, the more we put the seal on, the better off we all are as a society. Thank you so much for your leadership on this as well. And thank you, Mr. Alacon.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn, followed by Mr. Smith, and then Mr. Alacon.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Well, I just wanted to stand up here and say, I think this is exactly the next step where we should be going. I was very excited that our convention center has been certified as a green convention center, the largest facility of its kind to be certified as a convention center green. And when that report came to my, our Trade, Commerce and Tourism Committee, one of the things I was talking about was when the California delegation was in Denver, part of what was encouraged of all the delegations was to reduce our carbon footprint. And each delegation actually had a green sign on their state post to signify that we had been a green delegation and done everything we had, could do to reduce our carbon footprint. This is perfect because now people who come to a green convention center can also stay somewhere where they know it's been certified green. And one of the things I had brought up with the convention center was maybe we look at giving some incentives, you know, giving, reducing some costs, whatever. If a conference was booked and could be traced to have reduced our carbon footprint from the moment they left their home to where they stayed, how they got around Los Angeles, and where they booked their convention. I think that would be something that we could do in Los Angeles that would really encourage people to begin looking at these things. So I'm glad we're moving in this direction. I think that's the right thing to do. And Richard, you mentioned that the community colleges are looking to do training, workforce training for green jobs. And I, at SCAG yesterday, we looked at seven essays that had been written about green technology. One of them was written by Mona Fields, who talked about how community colleges are now really going to focus on that next workforce, training them to be proficient in green technology and green jobs. So it's all coming together, and I'm glad to see that we're leading the way on that. So thanks for all, everybody's hard work on this.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Smith?
I'm just very proud to stand up and support this. You know, this city has worked very hard in the last few years, and I've said repeatedly, and I'll repeat it again, that this city council over the last few years has done more environmental work than the previous 100 years in this chamber, and I'm very proud of what we've done. We have a zero-waste policy. It's an adopted policy of our city of LA. And I know Mr. Alacon and I both kind of started our careers fighting dumps. We understand the degradation that leads in the community from landfills. And anything we can do to divert trash, to recycle more, is a plus and a movement in the right direction. I'm glad to support this. And particularly, I want to commend the hotel motel industry. I have looked at all over the world at what you're doing, and how many hotels and motels have you gone to where they have a little plaque in there that says, "If you want to help the environment, use your bath cloths two, three days in a row. Ask us not to do your linens every day." You know, at home, we don't change our linens every day. I don't think many people do. So why not do it in a hotel? Because it saves them money, time, but also saves water, saves energy. These are the kind of things we should be doing. I think the industry has done a great job. If anyone wants to see some really great work, go to San Francisco, to the San Francisco Hilton, which is a totally self-sustained operation. There's a Hilton Hotel that recycles everything, reuse everything, creates our own energy on-site. It's a great facility. Or Somus Restaurant up in San Francisco also, which instead of like most restaurants that have 25 trash cans, they recycle everything, including food scraps, which they use in a composting system they have there. So there are some great opportunities for business to really contribute to the environment, and this program will help move that along, and I commend Mr. Alacon for doing that. It's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Councilmember Alacon?
Just to close on this issue, let me say that the beauty of this program isn't that we're asking for 100% compliance on every single environmental concept you could think of. The beauty is that we've incorporated flexibility, so that if you can't meet it in one, meet the criteria in one area, you can adopt a different procedure. Essentially, what we're trying to do is reduce the carbon footprint, if you will. That's one of the goals here. Rather than look at ensuring that businesses comply with every single request for reduction in use or whatever. So the businesses should not fear this program. They should not look at this as, oh, that's an environmental program, and they're coming to regulate us and hammer us. What they should look at is the opportunity to learn how to be more efficient and effective with their business, and be positive on the green side. I absolutely believe that if businesses felt that they could create an environmental improvement as a result of their business operation that did not cost them more money, they would do it. And that's because everybody should be pro-environment. And I believe in the city of Los Angeles, where we have a very liberal track record on environmentalism, that this is the place where we can have tremendous impact. So I want to thank all the departments involved. This has been a massive coalition that includes the organizations from outside of Los Angeles, particularly those jurisdictions that have already established a green business certification program. They have been extremely helpful in this process. But mostly, the Environmental Affairs Department for their leadership and working with us and making sure we were able to present something to you that was feasible. And then finally, of course, again, we want to thank general manager David Nahai, who used his signature authority to allocate the $150,000, which really makes this program go. So I think all of us should send a little thank-you note to them for doing that. There is a nexus between the DWP and environmentalism. I believe that the $150,000 will be saved in multiple numbers by DWP, and that's why they did it. So with that, I urge your eyes support. Again, thank all my colleagues. More important than any kudos for any individuals, make this program work in your district. Exploit it. Work with the department to have community meetings. Work with your chambers of commerce. Let them know that this is out there. Work with your business community. This is a great opportunity to organize and, most importantly, reduce the carbon footprint and improve our quality of life in the city of Los Angeles.
Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you. I wasn't going to say anything, but something caught my attention, and I think there's a lot of thanks that should go around for all the expertise and all the effort that has gone into this. What caught my attention is when Councilmember Alacon, and rightfully so, said that we're considered to be a little bit of a liberal city when it comes to environmental issues. But too many people throw that name, that term around, and it comes across in different ways, especially when it comes to business. But one thing that I'd like to point out is that I think that is accurate, but I'd like to add to it that one of the things that I've enjoyed, being an engineer by degree myself, and working with the vast array of staff that we have in this city, that we attack these issues from a very technical vantage point and a very practical vantage point, and we do try to strike the proper balances, yet move forward, not trying to find excuses, not to, but trying to figure out ways to do it right and to do many, many things right. So I just wanted to point out that we have tremendous expertise in our city, and let's not forget when we find the time to recognize the national awards and the recognitions of organizations around the world that recognize our various departments for their expertise and their leadership and their innovativeness and the fact that they're doing things before other cities or counties or countries have even tried to do it. We're actually getting it done in many cases, and that's because of the dedicated individuals who have put themselves on the line with their expertise, willing to challenge us when we have some crazy ideas and try to see how we can make it work, but make it work right. So thank you all very, very much.
Thank you very much. Again, thank you, Mr. Alacon. This is a great idea here in the city of Los Angeles and leading the way. With that, Madam Clerk, if you could please open the roll on this item. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Thank you. We do need to reconsider item number four. If we could open the roll, I know we deferred it. Open the roll on item number four. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
There has been an amendment circulated. Mr. Sax, and if he's still downtown, Mr. Sax in downtown? The amendment has not been circulated yet. Okay, Mr. Sax, the amendment, and I apologize, the amendment has not been circulated yet. I don't believe you have a copy there. We will make sure that that gets forward, and then we'll just go to item number seven. Yes, Mr. Cardenas?
Was it announced earlier that item four was going to be put over after it was called special?
Yes.
So we are going to hear it after all?
We're going to hear it after all.
Okay, thank you.
So if we could please make sure that the amendment that has been, that is being distributed to ensure that it does get out to the, excuse me, out to downtown as well. Now go to item number seven.
Item number seven was called special by Councilmember Weiss.
Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask the folks from Building and Safety to come forward. And while they're doing that, I want to thank a number of members of this council. Bill Rosendahl, in particular, who has been very, not just vocal, but really active, you know, pounding the pavement on the billboard issue. You, Madam President, have done an awful lot. Our council president, Eric Garcetti, has. And for this item in particular, Mr. Parks moved the funding through his committee, and I want to thank him for doing that. The item before you is a long time in coming. It's actually seven years in coming, and it was, it's my legislation from seven years ago, but it's my wife's idea. Because when I first ran, it, I mean, and which shows you, I mean, this issue was, the billboard issue was a salient issue when half of us here ran in 2001 in the city of Los Angeles. And Leslie's idea was that the billboard companies should have to pay for the inspections that the city wasn't able to do on its own, and that when the inspection was completed, the city should put a certificate on each billboard so that members of the public, when they do what Mr. Rosendahl's constituents have had to do, go out and count things, that they would see a city certificate, and they'd know when they call a council office, any of our offices, they'd be able to say, "Well, I met Robertson and Pico, and here's a billboard with the following certificate." Is it kosher? Actually, if Pico and Robertson, it likely would be kosher. But, but, um, but what I'd like to, so Leslie had a great idea. Most of us who were here then, all of us who were here then, voted for this. It was enacted into law and then held up for years and years. It's not a good story. But be that as it may, what's important is that, finally, it's going forward. I'd like to give folks at the table a moment to tell us exactly what's going forward. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Hector Butrago. I'm the chief of the Code Enforcement Bureau in the Department of Building and Safety.
Executive Officer Ray Chan, Department of Building and Safety.
We're here before you this morning to request the approval of our report, which introduces a draft ordinance, which will allow us to carry out the off-site sign inspection program. The program will allow us to inspect and create an inventory of all billboards in the city of Los Angeles. The ordinance includes a fee for that service that is payable by the sign companies, and because it includes a fee, there is a 10-day publication period. My understanding is that the ordinance has been referred to the city clerks for publication. So you will not be able to approve the ordinance today. The city attorney has reviewed it and approved it, and we would request that you approve the ordinance when it's presented before you on December the 17th.
Yeah, but my question, tell us about the program.
The program, we will, the Department of Building and Safety will go and inspect every single off-site sign in the city of Los Angeles, create an inventory, and at the same time, will compare with our records to ensure that the signs were built with a permit and are legally existing. And those that are not would have, we will make those comply or be removed.
And also, for the signs that comply, we're going to have a complying sticker to be posted on the pole of the sign, and that is also part of the ordinance.
Well, thank you for that. It, I'm biased, I think it was a great idea that Leslie had, and I really appreciate that while it has been so unfortunate that it has taken so long, I really appreciate that your department is committed to it and is going to work hard on it. And the point of this is so that Mr. Rosendahl and his constituents won't have to do that extraordinary thing that they just did. The government ought to do that, and by putting the certificate on the sign you've inspected, it will give members of the public the opportunity, if they have any questions, to call in and ask about those. I'm particularly interested in making every bit of information the city has in its possession that it received from billboard companies public. At Plum, we had a pretty spirited discussion, not with you, with the city attorney's office, because even at Plum, it was clear to me that there were items that they had in their possession that were not being made public. You have something you can tell us about that today?
Yes, the city attorney has informed us that, in their opinion, all those documents that the billboard companies submitted to us are public documents. We have put the lists of billboards submitted by the three different companies online. They are available as we speak. And the paper files that they submitted, it is, it's a considerable amount of paper that we're in the process of con... that we're in the process of converting into a digital form.
I appreciate that. I know Ms. Gruel does as well, because she and I worked together, it was probably over a year ago, when there was a bump in that road. And she was very insistent, along with me, that all of that information be made public, not just publicly available, but be made public. There's a difference. I don't think that we ought to put the burden on citizens. I think the government ought to put all this information out there, after all the billboard companies put it out there, because they want people to rent their space. I mean, there's no secret, there's nothing more open, notorious, or obvious than the public fact and location of a billboard. So I really want to thank all of you for doing that. Thank Mr. Parks, especially because this is a funding issue, and it had to go through your committee, and I really do appreciate that you moved it through, Mr. Parks. Thank you very much. And thank my colleagues, particularly Ms. Gruel, Mr. Garcetti, and Mr. Rosendahl. And thank my wife.
Your buttons are not working on the speakers if you wish to speak. I currently have Rosendahl, Parks, and Gruel. If there's anyone who else wishes to speak, raise your hand, and we'll put you on the queue, because the buttons aren't working. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Weiss and your wife, for leadership on this issue. Good morning.
Good morning.
You know, Hector, they were beating on you last time around, and I was offended in terms of why things hadn't been done, why things hadn't been done. And I want to do a shout out to Dennis Hathaway and to my community that came with Building and Safety, that were extremely cooperative. And we went out on a Saturday, 30 of us, and we got a handle on absolutely everything we have in the district. And you know, we had 563 billboards, of which half of them, some 300-plus, were structures, and 17 of them are digital. You might have seen Lopez's piece where I admitted I was a rookie in 2006, when we voted unanimously for the settlement. I was a rookie. You know, city attorneys tell you things, and what do you know until you grow up a little bit around the politics in the city and how that office works. But one thing I have learned since that is that settlement of 2006, there's no revenue stream from these digital billboards coming in. And these digital billboards are the ones that are the biggest safety issue for me, and also in a visual blight sense. So I hope we can somehow revisit the issue of digital billboards and a revenue stream for the city, since we're the ones who are impacted by that, and I look forward to that. I also look forward to those billboards in my district that we've now cataloged that are illegal. Not only do I want them torn down, but I want them fined. Nobody should be putting anything up without the law. Now, if there's no law that fines them, well, then, you know, it's too bad. But I just don't think we should say, take them down, after they've had exposure with it, and we've got no revenue stream at all in that particular situation. So at least the period of time that they were up there, whatever monies they made, whatever the percentages that we should get, we should get something from those illegal signs that have been sitting up there. So in conclusion, I'm thrilled in 10 days this can go into effect. It did come before our budget committee, and it was a no-brainer for us, obviously. But I also know, and many of us know this, that some of the more responsible billboard companies are more than willing to pay their fees in this process, and they've been wanting to pay their fees. So I hope we address that issue where their revenues can come in that are sitting there waiting to be used as part of the process, rather than taxpayers' money. Is that an opportunity for us?
Certainly, this is a great opportunity, but that has to occur after the revised ordinance become effective.
Yeah. So the people need to know that when the revised ordinance becomes effective, there are responsible billboard companies wanting to give the checks that they had agreed to a couple of years ago. Is that correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, which will, of course, complement and even be substantially more money that the city will get toward the process of hiring people going out and checking the city. And frankly, the reason I moved forward is I didn't want to wait any longer. The billboards in my district pop out like mushrooms every other day, and we don't know what's going on, but now we do, and we want to thank you guys very much for your cooperative efforts with us and your integrity in this whole process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just wanted to rise and say thank you for your patience and your diligence, because I thought this was done years ago, but obviously it's been in the bowels of the city. But I wanted to just say, we're looking forward to the benefits of the program. It's a long time coming, and I'd like to just ensure that as you move forward, if there's additional support, we need to know that so that we are fully aware of what is going on, and we're looking forward for your status reports. I just wanted to also, in behalf of Mr. Reyes, wanted to alter or amend one of the paragraphs, page five, paragraph two, that the implementation date should be changed from February 1st, 2009, to January 25th, 2009, and that the allocations of the council-approved positions should be by January 15th, 2009. So that alters that paragraph. And the other issue is that we just want to move both committee reports.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Ms. Gruel, follow Mr. LaBonge.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I, too, want to stand up, and this has been a long time coming, and I think I asked in Budget and Finance why it had taken us so long to get to this point, because as Mr. Parks indicated, I think we thought this was going to be completed, and as Mr. Weiss indicated, we also wanted to make sure that this was public information. It still was amazing to me when we went through this process initially, that we didn't know where all the billboards were, and that, too, we couldn't, you know, make some requirements that all those that were legal just be taken down. I think the other point I made in Budget and Finance Committee was the concern regarding the digital. And Mr. Smith and I voted no in Budget Committee when this came forward, because we felt a concern, and it was in executive session, the concern about it being brighter than the existing ones. And we were, we were told that, in fact, it would not be brighter, it wouldn't impact the neighborhood, and I think we all feel that that was really not the truth. And that is why so many of us have been upset, and Mr. Rosendahl walking in his neighborhood, and I have so many of my activists, many of which are here that go into the community and let us know when those are forthcoming. It changes the whole atmosphere of that neighborhood. It's bad enough that there's sometimes those billboards there, but it also changes the dynamics of that neighborhood. So I know that is a separate issue that is coming forward on the digital billboards, but I think, most importantly for us, it is knowing where those billboards are, knowing whether they're legal or illegal, and who owns them. It is not proprietary information, and that's why we fought so hard that last time, Mr. Weiss and I did. These things, people should know who operates them. We have a lot of problems where billboards are put up inappropriate for a neighborhood and community, and many of the billboard companies have been responsible when a billboard has gone up in a neighborhood that's near a school, and we feel that even First Amendment rights, but it's not appropriate, and they have removed them. But if you don't know who owns them, and the constituent wants to do that, it's not fair. So I think we need to know all of this information, we need to move forward, get the facts out there, and to be able to address, I think, what we all feel is billboard blight in many of those neighborhoods and communities. So I'm glad we are moving forward, and we hope that there will be no delay in this implementation. If there are any challenges, staffing issues, whatever it may be, we want to know now, as you go forward, and I know you will let us know. Do not be quiet and silent and say, a few months later, oh, we had problems hiring and we had problems personnel, whatever it may be. We want to start, we wanted to start yesterday. So, okay. Thank you very much for your work on this. I don't know if you want, sorry, look, you want to say something, so I don't want to stop you from your, to.
Actually, you know, thank you very much for your support, and once this ordinance becomes effective, we are going to pound the pavement, and we will start the work right away.
Okay. Again, let us know if there's any challenges, personnel, whatever it may be, if there's hiring involved in that to be able to do that, and I know we have, the fees will help pay for that, but there's anything, any hiccup, we want to know.
We are not going to hire any new staff. We actually moved some of the existing staff from out of function.
To do this.
Into to do this, so we could hit the roll right away.
Thank you.
And the ordinance is being suggested with an urgency clause, just so that you know how anxious we are to get started ourselves.
So we will make sure that when we approve this today, it will go forthwith as well. Okay. Thank you very much.
Ms. Gruel, I just want to add, this was heard extensively in Personnel Committee, and there is a commitment to immediately effective with the existing personnel. There is no additional personnel, they're going to use existing and get it on the road soon as they can. Mr. LaBonge?
Thank you very much. Thanks to all who have been involved. Just a question, these electronic boards, video boards, they have some kind of connection to DWP, and DWP should have a list where they are. Is that possible? Do you ever work with them at all?
We will be working with the Department of Water and Power, but we have to inspect every sign anyway, so we will be.
I got that. But they also had to inspect it for the electrical that they brought in there.
Yes.
And the other question, from a commercial standpoint, say you were Frye Boots, or Stacy's Cleaners, or somebody, and you wanted to get a board up somewhere, and you ask, show us a list where we could put in the San Fernando Valley our ad. They would provide that for you. Have you inquired from a commercial standpoint where these locations are? Meaning, you're doing business, and you want to use boards?
Right.
Have you ever said, hey, where are your boards? I want to know where CBS boards are, I want to know where Clear Channel boards are?
With the list provided by them, we have now the information as provided by all these sign companies. However, as our survey moves along, then we have a more accurate information and more complete information as to the location of every board. Now, you're referring to a business. If a business would like to put up, you know, a sign within their own property, this is what we call the onsite sign.
I'm not talking about that, Ray, and thank you for all you do, Ray. No, I'm just talking about the big billboard signs that are up there, that if you wanted to say, like when I see Mr. Smith has, flying his colors today, when USC announces on KNX, when they used to broadcast, they'd have all that up there, and they say, where do we want to put it in the city? They would probably say, these are the locations. You know, if you're trying to do business, I would wonder if you had ever inquired that way as well.
I'm not too, are you saying that whether we would be providing those information or?
No, no, just ask them. Call them all up and say, I want to do what, I want, this building department wants to do billboard campaign, to say what a great guy Ray Chan is, and they want to put it all around the city, okay? Where are the best locations? I'm just saying, have you ever approached it that way?
No, we never have, we never have.
Well, think about that, you know, just to see what it is.
Like Ray says, we actually have the list that they submitted. They've disclosed that information.
Let me ask another question. You have these buildings here, just a similar subject, but pulldown banners. When on a building like this, where you put a pulldown banner, you're out in front of a window, I know the fire department doesn't like that, are you guys working on that as well?
Yes, yes. I mean, there are temporary banners that can be allowed.
If you talk about the super graphics signs, I think I have to defer that to the city attorney, because there is pending litigation right now regarding that matter.
I got that, we'll refer to it, but from safety, I want to make sure when they put them over windows that there's no occupancy there, so if there is a fire, there's access. Right, Mr. City Attorney?
Based on my understanding, that the Fire Department Chief Frye is on top of this matter.
Got it. Thank you very much. Thank you. You could have said right or wrong, Mr. City Attorney, I just didn't know what you wanted to say. I thought city attorneys got paid by the word, so you're not making too much money today.
I'm doing my part for the budget crisis.
Thank you, Dion. Mr. Zine.
Best thing you've ever said since you've been here. You're in a furlough. Working furlough. The question came about the digital. Ms. Gruel mentioned the lighting of the digital. It's also the changing. Is that coming back in another form? We're talking now about the billboards throughout the city of Los Angeles to catalog, to identify what's legal, what's illegal, what's coming down, et cetera. But the issue that's really concerned a lot of folks is the digital aspect, the ones that are like a TV screen, that have changing ads every four seconds, or eight seconds, or whatever they want to time it for. Is that going to come back in another session? But the settlement agreement, as I understand.
Yes.
Permits them to modernize, which, when you examine the word "modernize," it turns into digital, and my understanding is going to be 800-plus digital billboards, or potential for 800 digital billboards in the city of Los Angeles. Is that correct?
Yes, that's the, per the settlement agreement.
Okay. Now, I don't agree with that settlement agreement, because I was told modernization, not knowing that modernization meant digital, and there's a lot of people upset about that. Is that going to be coming back for a further discussion, a future discussion?
I think that, for that, I have to defer to city attorney, you know, and.
Well, he's on a, he's on a word furlough program.
We got city attorney here in the house.
We have city attorneys who actually can't speak.
Okay, who can't speak. And this is going to take place throughout the city, so you'll be able to come back in whatever period of time and say, we have so many billboards identified in the city of Los Angeles by these particular companies, large ones, small ones, everything.
Right. In addition to that, other than identifying the location of the billboards from different company, we'll be able to identify which ones are illegally constructed and which ones are illegally altered. And we're going to put together inventory while we're moving along with this program. When we found out there's any illegal constructed or illegal altered billboards, then what we would do, we will issue orders to comply at the same time, to do the enforcement part of our work.
And the last time we started this, there was a lawsuit filed, and the program was put on hold, and those folks were reassigned to Building and Safety.
Yes.
But with the settlement agreement, we would hope that there's not going to be a lawsuit filed, so we can at least start the program and start this inspection, and then follow up with this issue about the digital, which is the modernization, which has a lot of folks upset. You have a representative behind you to address the digital aspect?
Good morning, council members. David Michelson with the Office of the City Attorney. I'm pleased to be here with you today. Just briefly, on the issue of the settlement agreements and the digital signs, our office, as you may know, transmitted to both the Planning Commission and to the City Council an interim control ordinance, which would shut down the installation and conversion of all billboard, super graphics, digital signs during a period of six months to allow you all in the Planning Department and the other policymakers of the city to comprehensively review, rewrite, and newly implement off-site sign regulations for the city, to address all aspects of off-site signs. We believe that is critically needed. The settlement agreement, as approved by City Council and the mayor, it was involvement of our office, clearly, specifically called out for conversion of existing signs, up to 840 of those signs, which could be digital, and that was clearly part of the discussions as part of those settlements. However, what we have said recently with respect to this ICO, that you still have your police powers to regulate off-site signs, including digital signs. And what we're telling you is that the only way to sort of get a pause in having these signs go up, including digital sign conversions, is this interim control ordinance, which will allow you the breathing room necessary to figure out how you want to regulate digital signs, super graphic signs, any other types of signs that are out there, in part because the federal court recently, in a case called Worldwide Rush, said that the city's ban, in part due to its exceptions, is problematic. So that's sort of the framework that's before you, I think, with respect to billboards. I believe at Plum this coming Tuesday, we'll be in closed session to talk to you in more depth about Worldwide Rush, and we're hoping that you schedule the interim control ordinance as soon as feasible, so we can talk to you in depth about that as well.
Is there, is there a condition of a hardship exemption that they could use? Because if we say you can't, you can't build anymore of the digitals, and they come up with a hardship exemption, which I know has been abused in the past, is there a provision where they can utilize a hardship exemption to continue while we have this moratorium in place?
There is an exception in the interim control ordinance that we have drafted. There's an exception that's required by California law, and that exception's fairly straightforward. You could call it a hardship, I don't think it would be a hardship exception, but the exception's straightforward. If a sign company already has a permit in hand issued by the Building and Safety Department and has actually begun work to put that sign in and has relied to its detriment in pulling that permit and starting the work, then that sign could go forward, yes.
Okay, then I would ask Building and Safety, are there any such permits in the pipeline at this time?
There are such permits in the pipeline.
And how do we put a hold on those so we don't make a farce of this interim control we're trying to do? Because if they already have the permits pulled for the next 100, then this interim control ordinance is going to be a joke.
They're not pulled for the next 100.
Well, how many are pulled? How many are in the process right now that we could put a hold on?
You talk about the permits that have been issued for these projects.
For the, I'm concerned with the digital aspect.
Right, right. Right now, as we speak, there's about 20 that are in the process of construction.
Okay, how do we put a hold on that and put a hold on any future so it doesn't interfere with the six-month moratorium we're trying to put into place? Because if they make the rush to get those permits in, then they use this exemption that we're going nowhere. And if we're going to use the exemption, we need to use the exemption. And I've discovered that we put an interim control ordinance, they find a loophole, and the hardship becomes the loophole. And if they got the permits in the process, then, and there's 20 right now, next week there could be 40. How do we put a stop to say, we're not going to issue anymore, we're going to put a hold How do we put a stop to say, "We're not going to issue anymore, we're going to put a hold on it, so we can actually do what we want to do to establish some regulations," because once the regulations take place, they may not be retroactive, those boards that are already up and in the process of being established under digital.
Council members, if I might interject, and Councilmember Zine, these are really excellent questions. We would love to get before you on an agendaized item, dealing with the ICO and these issues, where you could have this kind of discussion. What's actually before you today is the off-site inspection program, so I'm a little reluctant to allow the conversation and discussion to go too far. But we would love to get back here and have that conversation.
Let me just make it clear, that if they've got 20 in the pipeline right now, we need to do something so we don't end up with 40 next week. So whatever Building and Safety needs to do, so we have ourselves covered, otherwise, we're going to actually do an interim control, it's not going to have any impact or any effect. So through Building and Safety and City Attorney, I don't want to belabor that point, but I think this council is in agreement that if we're going to have any interim control ordinance, it'd be something that we can actually put into place and not make a mockery of it.
Right.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Going to go back to item number four, the amendment has been distributed. We go down to downtown. Mr. Sacks?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm certainly glad I held this. Reading this amendment, it states, "To change recommendation number five of the CAO's report attached to the committee report to instruct the agency, CAO, to or designated to not remove but to restore to the agency land acquisition priority list proposed expenditures in the amount of $485,000." Does, the recommendation is the CAO's report, number five, but on this committee report, or this agenda item, recommendation number five is to request the mayor to negotiate and execute a contract with the executive director and administrative assistant selected on behalf of the city to provide staffing for the green retrofit program. I'm concerned about that, I'm concerned about the fact that you're restoring money, or you're asking, neither one of these actions were included in this list of, on the agenda items, on actions to be taken, but not only that, but the items that listed name a specific projects, and yet neither one of these amounts of money, which total $1.385 million, goes to list, goes on to list any projects that the money will be allocated for. Is that actually included in the report at some point, someplace, that somebody could look up and actually find a designation for this money? Thank you.
Thank you. That item is now before us as amended. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Next item.
Madam President, there are motions for posting a referral.
Those will be posted and referred.
There is an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Weiss requests to leave at 11:30 a.m. on December 16th, and to be excused on January 9th for personal business, this meets policy.
Mr. Weiss will be excused.
And that clears the desk.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss?
Can we send item seven forthwith, please?
Yes, item seven will go forthwith. Thank you. Any other announcements? If not, yes.
Announcement? Yes. I'd just like to announce that tomorrow night, Saturday night, right here at 6262 Van Nuys Boulevard, right off of Sylvan Street, just a few meters from where we're standing at this moment, we're going to have the Van Nuys Holiday Celebration Christmas tree and menorah lighting, and it'll be from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. We're going to have holiday music, free refreshments, and Mr. and Mrs. Claus, we've scheduled them, and they did confirm on their schedule, their busy schedule this time of year, that they will be there, and so we want to make sure that everybody understands that they are all welcome, whether you live in the valley or not. So thank you once again. It's tomorrow, December 6th, Saturday, from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m., right here on the corner of Sylvan and Van Nuys Boulevard, big huge Christmas tree and a big menorah we're going to be lighting. And also, another, on a personal note, I'll be missing all of you for the next couple weeks, as I'll be going to Israel with a bunch of legislators with the Federation, and hopefully come back with some more information. Mr. Smith just went recently on a trash tour, but mine's a little different.
I went on a port tour.
On a port tour as well, so now it's my turn. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Yes, Mr. LaBonde?
Yeah, there's a half marathon on Sunday morning through Griffith Park, Silver Lake Echo Park, finishing downtown Los Angeles. If you want to run out, meet at the Los Angeles Zoo parking lot, 7:00 a.m. Sunday morning, City of Los Angeles, City of Angels Half Marathon.
Thank you. Any adjourning motions today, colleagues? Yes, Mr. LaBonde has an adjourning motion, if everyone could please rise. Yes, Mr. LaBonde?
Yeah, I'd like to ask for adjourned memory of David Frank Hemmerich, who was with the Department of Recreation and Parks. He passed at an early age. He was a very positive employee, was very constructive in his work in the Griffith Metro region. He survived by his mother and sisters. I ask for adjourned in memory of David Frank Hemmerich. And also, I ask for adjourned memory of Kevin Lernerhan, 52-years-old, my cousin. He got called early, tragically. I lived with him in 1961, when my mother was ill, and my uncle Bernard came by the house, and all the LaBonde boys got spread all over, and he was a great young man, and kind of like a little brother to me, even though I got a little brother, but Kevin Lernerhan is survived by his sister Connie and his mother Helen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaBonde. Any other adjourning motions? Hey, Ms. Hahn, would you like to announce what's going to happen? Ms. Hahn? Ms. Hahn, would you like to announce what's going to happen today?
Oh, today at 1:30, my brother Jim Hahn will be sworn in as Superior Court Judge. The governor appointed him to fill a vacancy, so today's a swearing-in. Unfortunately, it's exactly at the same time as Ethel Bradley's funeral, which is also at 1:30. I know many of you are going to the funeral, I am going to go to my brother's swearing-in. I think it'll be a very proud moment for my mom, and me, and all of our family, and I know my dad is extremely pleased at this next chapter of my brother's life. I think it's perfect for him, and we thank the governor for making what I think is one of his finest decisions and appointments.
I think Ethel and Tom Bradley are probably up there as well, saying it's okay.
Yeah.
Janice, for you to miss that, and celebrating your brother's achievements. Yes, Mr. Cardenas?
I'd just like to publicly congratulate Jim, and also thank him, thank him for being the person that he is. He's a great appointment, he earned it, and also, I will be at the funeral, so I apologize if you wouldn't send my regards to him and my congratulations to your brother. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Rosendahl?
Yes, I'd just like to add a shout-out to your brother, you know, he has the integrity, he has the temperament, and when I used to do the television show about these Superior Court Judges, we always wanted to understand their temperament and their judgment, and how they work with people, their integrity, so we are thrilled that your brother now will be in the court system. Give him our love.
Yes, Ms.
Yeah, one more announcement, I'm sure that Councilmember Parks will appreciate it, he's one year younger on Sunday. Councilmember Parks, one of the youngest guys in the council. It's his birthday.
Thank you, Tony, I appreciate the reminder.
One.